At six thirty. And thank you all for coming. We have all of our board members present except Tracy and she is out of town. Our administrators are present. And we have some reports and presentations to the board. Carrie, do you want to start?
I'm just so.
We're in this gorgeous room. Thank you guys for putting so much time.
I'll move over to this corner. So I'm not standing.
Well, welcome to our happy home. We are not a hundred percent set up yet, but if you want to come back on the welcome night or back to school night, the night before school starts, then it will, um, we'll look even more put together. For example, this is our writing center back here for both rooms. So those things will be labeled and there'll be more paper stuff there. Bridget's section over here will have more tables. Bridget dropped a table on her foot this afternoon.
Yeah, I quit.
So one big blue welt later, we stopped with the moving of the tables. But anyway, what we'd like to do tonight is to give you an overview of what our K-1 program is all about in fifteen minutes or less. And I don't think I could guess how much time actually this summer we've spent working on things. So it will be a little, little tricky to condense it. And that's why I've got my notes here, so I don't drift off from the, from the topic. But I'm going to be talking to you about why we wanted to do this. And then Bridget's going to be talking to you about how we're going to do this and, and some of the things we've worked on so far. But I wanted to start with a few thank yous. First of all, thank you to Ben and Shelley who gave us the okay to do this. You know, it's one thing when you come as a teacher with some ideas, but when you come with an idea that involves structurally knocking a hole in the wall, that's something different. So we appreciate their support. Gary Johnson, who we, you know, we just waited anxiously while he crawled up there to see, make sure this wasn't a weight-bearing wall so we could do this and did a lot of the actually knocking things out with the sledgehammer. So big thanks to, to he and Simon and people who work with him. And our janitorial staff, the real unsung heroes around here. This kind of put a wrinkle in their schedule, I think, in terms of cleaning and moving furniture. So we appreciate that. And last but not least, the new tech guy, who, um, my desk used to be over here and that meant my computer was over there and all that stuff that goes with it. So I kind of casually said, I'd really like to move my desk, which, and I guess Bridget did the same thing, moved her desk where front ahead. So that meant rewiring everything. And so all the wires for the computers and everything had to go up there and over there. So anyway, we won't be doing it again anytime soon. Okay, so to talk about why we wanted to do this, to put it short and sweet, we wanted to do this because we think it's the best thing for kids. And there are lots of benefits, we believe, in why we're doing this, but there's probably two main things that we decided on. And one is because it's the developmentally appropriate thing to do, which means that we're validating kind of the path and the pace that kids take when they come to school. You know, the state of Michigan, as most states do, have a curriculum that is, is kind of grade level based, which means they kind of are saying, you know, in kindergarten you do this, in first grade you do this. And even though we certainly abide by that, that isn't necessarily the way that kids learn. And one analogy we heard that is that that's kind of like a stair-step method, when especially at early education, early L level, it's, um, it's more like a path. So that we're looking at, you know, kids starting here and the goal of them being here, but they might take a different pace and they might take a different path. And then our job is to make sure they don't stray off the path or sit on the path too long. But, um, you know, kind of validating the pace at which they do things. And the second major reason for doing this is because it's very efficient. At every grade level, there are, there's a range of abilities, but I don't think that's ever a greater range than at early L. So for example, if you looked at literacy, let's say kindergarten, the range is from here to here. And maybe at first grade, it's from here to here. Well, you've got that common ground there where essentially, you know, Bridget and I may both be working on some of the same things with different students. So what this allows us to do structurally, because of, of instead of having to send kids across the hall for that kind of flexible grouping, now to have this space where it's easier to have those kids flow. And also instructionally, in terms of, you know, allowing kids to, um, you know, to kind of move along at their, their pace. But for each of us to be teaching, you know, a, a smaller range than what we were before, um, is really, you know, makes for more individual time for students, which is a good thing. And also part of that is the efficiency with doing the collaboration, which we've already really discovered this summer in working together, that the collaborating in terms of research that we're reading and sharing, in terms of lesson plans, collaborating that we're doing, we anticipate doing when it comes time to analyze assessment data. You know, the, the two heads are better than one is, is, you know, really, really true. And the collaboration with sharing information with parents and a lot more. So all of that is huge benefits for students because they're going to all get, you know, two teachers looking at all that information and, um, and, you know, looking at what's, what's best for them. So there are a lot of other benefits that we know are there from, you know, similar experiences we've had in the past and, and from all the information and research that's out there. But those are kind of the two, big two. So we'll let Bridget talk about some of the stuff in the meantime.
Are you okay if I stand right here?
Yep.
You're away, I suppose.
I'll move out of the way so you can get.
So our, oh yeah. So our how we're doing this is what we have been working on all summer. Every Wednesday, Carrie and I met at the day park and people there think we're crazy bag ladies now because of just massive amounts of stuff we brought with us, but it was a nice place to work on all this. And the first thing we needed was a common schedule. And so we have to thank Shelley that we, we have a very good schedule. We only have maybe twenty minutes at the end of the day where we're not together K-1. That one of us is in gym while one of us isn't here. And that's an okay thing because there's always going to be something we need to work on with just our K or just one. So the schedule is phenomenal. And then we had to look at the curriculum. And we put, um, our effort into making a continuum, both for whole group and for small groups. And so we were able to do that, not that you really care, but we worked really hard on putting together like this is just the informational text. And so for the most part, they look the same. So we've only underlined a few things that were specific to kindergarten or first grade. The Common Core standards are basically the same for the two. They just get a little tougher for first grade, but it's the same concept. And so we went through and did that for small group, for whole group. And we're going to get this accomplished through a new framework that we're trying this year, which is the Daily Five. And so that's going to be new throughout the school. And Carrie has her posters over there. And it's reading to self, reading to someone, listening to reading, word work, work on writing. And then the sixth one that they don't get to choose is meeting with teacher, because we choose what groups will be meeting with us. But that's allowing us the flexibility to meet with so many small groups and to really individualize. Because normally in a regular classroom, you might have six small groups and then every student has to fit somewhere. We are individualizing, but it's with those six small groups where now we have twelve to choose from. Because Carrie will be able to deal with six each week and I will be able to do, deal with six. So we really have twelve for the, to plug those students into once we see their assessment data. What else do you know? I guess the only thing we're really separating on is math, because that was a struggle to try to put those two together, the kindergarten and the first grade. But we do have an idea of from roundup and Carrie knowing the class going on, um, what students we need to trade already. And then when we see the new kindergartners and how it all shakes out, we are willing to take kindergartners into the first grade curriculum or back up some first graders into the kindergarten curriculum, but it won't be as flexible as the reading and writing will be. I don't know if you have any questions. We'd be happy to answer them. It was hard to pare this down into a small amount of time.
It was really, really hard to do that. But we don't want you sitting on those little chairs too long. But do you have any questions?
So how, what's your target date to their, or how much time do you need to figure that separation of what group goes to where? And how do you gauge that?
We'll be constantly doing that, but the first couple of weeks in September are always kind of assessment heavy. But we, we were thinking maybe every two weeks, we would be doing quick assessments to change those groups for reading and writing.
With the goal being that those, those groups are going to be very fluid in terms of, it's not like, you know, the old reading group days where once you were.
Yeah, you're a purple elephant all year long.
Yeah, all year long. But, um, and then those, those areas for literacy that we've already established, like those twelve areas on that continuum, you know, there will be a constant state of reevaluating where students are and, you know, and how we move them along.
That's good to hit here, Carrie, because I think maybe some parents' concerns is when you pull your kid from the first to the kindergarten. I think the opposite, we all think is admirable, but pulling the other way, you worry that are you going to still work on those kids to get them up to where they need to be?
Most certainly.
So that's good to know that you're changing that.
And, and sometimes, um, you know, that line of thinking comes when you're thinking about if it, if a classroom is a split, which this is not a split at all, you know, where you've got two groups, but, you know, but one teacher. This is much closer to a multi-age situation where you're really individualizing for each, each student. You're just kind of taking away the, the ceiling in terms of what, you know, where they can go. And so you may have students that are working, um, you know, with one group one time and another group at another time. Well, you also have times that you work within as a whole group, because I think that's, that would be an opportunity to.
We're going to have quite a few, uh, all of our Daily Five mini lessons. It's like a ten-minute mini lesson before they go into their, they're not centers, but that's kind of what it is, are going to be a whole group.
Should we tell them to all the big projects I do?
Yes.
Well, we've designed the day so that, uh, and designed the curriculum throughout the year so that we are, um, we're going to be having some, like, like I guess the word for it is projects, but we're going to have times where like, let's say, um, we would like to do puppet shows, or let's say we're going to do a project that combines math and art. And, um, you know, we have a time of the day set aside for that where we're all going to just be working, you know, together on those things. So we're really, really excited about that. In terms of working as a group with math or reading, there will be some, you know, beginning of the daytime where we'll be together with some math skills. But this area here where these big chairs are is kind of designated as our, our big group time. So we're going to have something called morning meeting where we all come together in the morning to kind of talk about our day and, and our goals and hey, what do we have in trouble with, what do we need to, you know, work on or practice, so. Well, I just want to say as a board, we certainly appreciate the amount of time and effort you've put into this. And it shows. You've, you've done a lot of extra and it's what makes Central Lake teachers special and we appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Where, where are we at with K-1 numbers? Or students?
K is a eighteen-ish. One is a, I don't remember.
I think I'm at twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
I think it's been pretty static. I don't think we've had a, we've enrolled a ninth grader, a senior.
We had a kindergarten coming yes, was it yesterday or was it?
We were here on Friday. We were here on Friday.
Picked up a packet. So we did, we did, I think, we, we have a junior that I think is coming, uh, who definitely enrolled.
Very good.
And come back and visit us again, but not like for a couple of weeks.
October would be great.
All right, thank you again.
Principal's report?
All right, I'm going to go. I'll go tonight. Ben and I have been collaborating most of the summer on getting preschool organized and more emailing, talking back and forth, looking at all the possibilities. Today, we met with a group at the library, um, representative from NMCAA and two people from the foundation and John Olds from Advanced Ed and Ben and I and Jill Hunt from Charon. And he'll tell you more about that in his superintendent report. We did interviews last Monday, the fifth, and hired two highly qualified teachers to teach preschool. We hope, we're recommending them this evening. We also have recommendations tonight for a music band position, title one. And we've got a long-term subposition for special ed. And the next board meeting, I will be updating you on the school improvement plan and its components. So I was short and sweet this evening.
Thank you.
Are we going to present the, because you want to talk about the scholar athlete?
Do you want to mention Kyle?
Oh, Kyle.
We'll take the picture.
Kyle's unable to make it this evening. We received from the Detroit Free Press a scholar athlete certificate. It says, "In recognition of outstanding achievement in high school academics and athletic competition, be it known that Kyle Hiltman of Central Lake has been designated a 2013 scholar athlete among Michigan graduating seniors." So we will present that to him very soon, so.
Big honor, congratulations.
Yeah.
Uh, moving on to all business, schedule options for high school.
This is one, um, that, that Keith called me on and, and really what I'm going to suggest here is we probably convene, and I'll flush it out briefly, but we probably convene a, a meeting of the curriculum committee, which is Greg and Sarah and Keith, since it was something you were interested in, we can have you help, um, join Shelley and me to do some research. But basically in a nutshell, what Keith had asked about was, you know, what sort of options exist to maximize student elective choice while it would cost conscience? We know we have a six-period day, there's a seven-period day, there's a trimester, uh, there's a four-by-four block, there's an A-B block, and I can, I can go on. There's lots of iterations of middle school, high school schedules. We are on traditionally what is considered the second most efficient of all schedules, the six-period day, where teachers teach five and prep one. The only more efficient schedule is a seven-period where teachers teach six and prep one. There are a lot of drawbacks to that, forty-two or forty-one minute classes, one more hall change. Very difficult if you're doing lab sciences or other projects to have enough focus time. But of course, it is a more efficient schedule. So I think really what Keith wanted to do is just take a look at, um, you know, our schedule and then reevaluate. And I don't want to, you know, take words.
No, that's, that's exactly.
Basically reaffirm are we on the best schedule for the size district, you know, where, and I, I know I've worked in, in districts with a seven-period or with a trimester, and some of those really fit nicely if you have a staff of eighty. But if you have a staff of twenty-four, the, the flexibilities just don't really come out because there's just not that many options. But I think it's important, excuse me, especially since you raised a question, we haven't looked at it in a while, to, to give that a, a review and we can come back at a later time and, and make a report.
Then if there was something we were considering, what's the timing of things like that? So if we were to make a change.
Typically, that's a great question. Typically, something like that's a year out. You, you would want to involve your, your, your faculty, your, your staff, you'd want to involve your parents. Set up, you know, multiple meetings where you sit down with a representative group and you basically look at the pros and cons and the costs of each of those schedules and, and then take a look at your current curricular offerings and really your goals. Where are you trying, where are you trying to go? Are you trying to add to electives? Are you, are you having a hard time with your, your band students taking oral language? Or a lot of times these discussions come out of a, a schedule conflict. And, and sometimes they just come up because they haven't been reviewed in a while. And so, uh, you know, some, I, I know over the last five years, at least in this state, many of these discussions came up because districts were feeling compelled to move to a more efficient schedule. That was really the driving force, which means it's not centered around academic achievement or whatever that's for kids. So philosophically, I have a problem with it from the get-go if it's just driven by that one reason. But sometimes it's unavoidable, you have to look at it. So typically it's, it's a one-year process where you really take a thorough review and arrive at some consensus and, uh, you know, have a rep, representative group make a recommendation for, for adoption.
So you will get back to us then, with that?
Hey, I'm going to recommend we schedule a meeting of the curriculum committee and we can begin that review and then talk about next time.
Good. Now is our time for guests and public comment? I have one totally unrelated to the, our classroom situation here. We kind of, I don't know if struggle is the right word, but for a number of years, we've been trying to work on kind of sprucing up the outside of the building here in terms of planting things and keeping things watered and weeded and so on. And we all know that that is much, much too big of a job for the janitors to do because of everything else they have going on. So we have made various attempts, you know, um, I guess I would say, you know, interest groups, whether that's a group of teachers or sometimes it's community members and a couple of teachers. But I would just like to advocate for having some, a couple of regular times a year that everybody planned on ahead of time. I think a couple of important times are before graduation and before school starting. And right now, there are quite a few areas around the two buildings that really could use some weeding. Kelly Berry's been up here all summer, I know, watering and taking care of this area, um, kind of on the, the north side of the gym, you know, area there. But anyway, it's, it's always kind of a challenge because there's a lot of us that would, would like to do it and we certainly want to see it look nice, but the truth of the matter is the timing of right now before school, we, we really need to be in our classrooms. So that makes it a little challenging to also try to, you know, have things, um, looking as nice, I guess, as what we would like it to. So I didn't know, I, I was talking with a couple of community members and they said, well, you know, why didn't, if we know ahead of time? And it's just that nobody's really driving the, you know, the boat with organizing it. I know this past spring, there were four or five people before graduation who did an amazing job of, you know, straightening things up over at the high school. But I don't know if that's something that needs to come from, you know, if, if there's a property committee or if it's come from the board in terms of steering that or any ideas that you may have. But it just seems like it would be nice to have an organized effort that we all knew, okay, the second Saturday of August, or the third, you know, Saturday in April, that's school cleanup day. But I'm not.
We seem to have a defined, um, process probably directly. We do, um, and I think it's my office or Shelley's that puts the feelers out and gets together group. And typically it's, it's Greg with some heavy equipment and many others. We have quite a few teacher volunteers and, you know, campus beautification for graduation.
It was beautiful this year.
No reason we couldn't do the same. But like, like you said, I think everyone's mind is on the curricular and in the classroom. You know, I don't know if that's a, I don't know, I don't know if that's a, a PTO function. I don't know if, if, not solely, but maybe just spearhead that and begin to get some interest, you know, together and get a date on the calendar.
Kind of form an ad hoc committee for building a ground slash community or.
Sure.
There might be, you know, community people that would be willing to, but you know how everybody's schedules are. It's kind of night, the more you, you know, you know ahead, the better in terms of planning, but.
Didn't we do that last, right before the school year last year? I think Brandon came down and I know Tim was here and you guys were here. But I don't know who started it, but someone contacted the PTO and we, those of us who could come did.
And the PTO has done a lot in terms of planting and paying for things out in front. It just would be kind of nice to have. I guess what we really need is a person to organize all of this. Are you, are you volunteering?
Maybe if you could talk to the garden group, what they think of the high school. We are resourced, but we don't have anyone that wants to take it because they're passionate.
Mel's volunteered, yeah.
I think we have a garden.
If, if that one's over, I've got a couple of comments. Got a chance to go down and visit some fall sports practices starting today. Football's in full effect and, um, everybody's excited and, uh, and I know that there have been a lot of coaches and a lot of parents, a lot of kids who put in a lot of time this summer to get a good kickoff going and went down and enjoyed watching that this afternoon. Volleyball conditioning is going on right now with, with a good number of kids. And I know that the, the soccer team has been conditioning as well this, this last week. So cross country is going to start up on Wednesday. So the, uh, the fall sports look like we're going to have good participation numbers, especially at the middle school level, which, um, which we need because we have a few kids down at that level, but it looks like we're going to have good participation amongst, amongst our students this year, which I'm thrilled about. And then my second comment was, um, for those of you that got a chance to go down and do the walk this weekend, it was so neat for me to watch one of our graduates, Eliza, put together an unbelievable program. It was, it was one of those things where, you know, you, you see a kid's talents throughout their high school career, but to watch her just kind of put all of this stuff together with, coordinating with a lot of people, it really spoke very, very well of, uh, of one of our graduates. And so I was super proud of her and, um, you guys did a great job because boy, that was a neat event. And good job raising a great kid because I, I can't tell you the number of people that said, wow, what a neat deal. And so, um, I know for me personally, it was, it was great. I know that there were several of you that were down there and just a really, really neat evening. So kudos to Eliza and the work that she put into that.
Okay, is there anything else? Well, moving on, um, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular reading of the board on July fifteenth. I'll motion.
Support.
Are there any comments or questions? Any changes? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? They are approved. Committee reports, I don't think we have any? A review of the expenditure log and approval of the July bills. Has everyone had a chance to look those over? Are there any questions? This is strange for me because not only are we short, but I can't see them.
We're normally sitting in our B.
Yeah. I have a motion, um, could I have a motion for approval of the bills?
Motion.
And support.
And support. We have a motion and support. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion is carried. Moving on to the action items. I would consider a motion to approve the MHSAA Junior High Middle School co-op agreement with Ellsworth for the purpose of allowing the Ellsworth Middle School students to participate in middle school football. Do we have a handout?
Just a minute.
Do you have a motion? Yes.
There is a handout here and basically it's, uh, the handout that Athletic Director Barry provided to me and Principal Renzi. Anytime you enter into a co-op agreement, the MHSAA has some guideline language that speaks to that. Quinn, since you're here, would you, would you mind giving us kind of a, a quick, a quick version of where we started, which wasn't with Ellsworth and now where we are? Because I think it's, it's kind of neat and I'm excited to watch our middle school program flourish with this new ring.
We've been so fortunate for twenty years to have a co-op with Ellsworth in football. And really, it's sustained our eleven-man football program. Without that cooperative agreement, there was, there would be some years that we would not have enough kids to play eleven-man football. So at the middle school level this year, we have seven boys in our eighth grade class. And with that few, a number of boys in our eighth grade class, we were really concerned that we would not have enough kids to play eleven-man football. Coach Heiki and I spent many, many hours this summer trying to put a plan in place where we could work on some co-op options, where we could recruit kids and talk to parents. And Corbin Newton was instrumental in helping us. But ultimately, what it came down to was us approaching Ellsworth and several Ellsworth parents coming to us and asking us, could our kids play middle school football? For years, we have not done that because Ellsworth's middle school basketball season is in the fall. And we didn't want to rob their best athletes from their basketball team to have them play football with us and then have, make them, make that choice. And so, um, in, in working with the new Athletic Director at Ellsworth, Chad Pletcher, and new Superintendent Aaron Gaffney, they had made the commitment that they were going Aaron Gaffney, they had made the commitment that they were gonna offer middle school football to those students that are not playing basketball. Their board is in the process tonight as well of approving the co-op and it's gonna give the opportunity for about eight boys from Ellsworth that would not have played basketball or run cross country to come out and play football. So it allows us to build our co-op, not from the ninth grade on like we have for the past 20 years, but now from the seventh grade on and it'll have a big impact on us. And I know that the families from Ellsworth that have been supportive of football for a lot of years are instrumental in supporting it right now at the lower levels too. So excited for the chance to have those guys come down and I know that Rob Hickey and Corbin Newton will do a great job with kind of getting those kids into the flow of playing with ours and several of them have played pop Warner with us. So they know the kids and they know the community, so it should be a good mix.
Hey Quinn, I have a question. Do you think that this little main thing?
I do.
Okay, because it's sometimes you don't know.
Yeah, I know.
Is it just this year or?
Boy, if it works the way the other co-op has worked, I would assume that it's gonna work for a long time. It's, we're trying to work with Ellsworth to get them to move their middle school basketball season back into October like we do so that we can get all of their kids and not just the kids that aren't playing basketball. And I, that might be on the horizon, but that's a whole league issue with them rather than just, you know, Central Lake and Ellsworth cooperating. That's their league having to adopt some things to change as well, but I think it's gonna be a positive thing and I think it'll last a while.
Thank you, Quinn. You know, this is another opportunity to say, you know, people look at teaching jobs as, you know, you pay, you work for nine months and then you're three months off. It's obvious that that's not what's happening because we have an awful lot of people who work year-round in order to make the program successful. Thank you.
Thanks.
How are we paying or charging Ellsworth for this?
We, Erin and I actually had that conversation this past week and what we've done in the past with Ellsworth is that we've taken a look at all of our costs for middle school football, whether with equipment, officials, travel, and then we've taken a look at our gate receipts and whatever our gate receipts and that don't cover for middle school football, then we will send them a bill, just like we do with what Bell Air does with us with soccer and skiing, that then their kids and their district will be responsible for paying for that part of the co-op. Because we only have two home games this year, we have five games total, so two home games as opposed to three, our revenues probably won't be as much, but our costs for officials are pretty low for middle school and then our travel is pretty short because we're going to places like Bell Air and the industry and that's a lot, our regular days, so.
And we just assume that since the field is ours and that, yeah, we can take that on us on our own.
That's what we've done, that's what we've done at the high school level for the past four years.
So it's just coaches and?
Coaches, travel officials.
Okay, are there any other questions? We already had a motion, Keith made it, to approve the MHSAA. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, the same. Motion is carried. Next, we have a motion to approve the hire of Sarah Ochs. Is that a concept?
Yes.
For the full-time K-12 band director music position. And that must be you, Sarah.
Yes, it's me.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Shelley, do you want to tell us a little about her or do you want?
Sure.
Or should we ask her to?
Either way, either way, we actually interviewed Sarah last spring. She interviewed very well. She came, highly recommended. All her references just had glowing things to say about her and her energy and her motivation and how hard she works and that she's a great thinker and a great writer and she loves to work with kids and so we're really excited to have her. Sarah, what do you want to ask?
I'm from Michigan State, so I'm the green. I'm very, very excited to come up here and it's just a blessing for me to come to such a obviously very warm community where everybody knows each other and keeps everything very down to earth, so I very much appreciate that.
It's nice to have you and I was reading through here, it says during your time at the elementary, you created a music curriculum, organized and presented a holiday program.
I did.
I'll tell you, people here would be very thrilled if we do a holiday program.
I printed a grapevine, it was quite popular.
It was very popular and then for a variety of reasons, it was discontinued, but I think we're excited to look at that again. To Michelle.
I just want to add real quick because I was on the interview committee because she was rather modest. She's actually very talented. She writes her own music and takes a lot of pop songs and then writes for bands and so she didn't give herself a whole lot of credit.
That's exciting.
About an hour ago, she was knocking the dust off the keys on the piano down in the music room, so it was nice to hear some sounds coming out of the room and it's exciting.
I was gonna ask, do you have a favorite instrument or what's, what's your like, your specialty, I guess? What would you consider?
Well, I studied on piano at Michigan State while I was doing music education there, but up through band, I did lots of woodwind instruments, but I think for me percussion is my big thing, so I love being on the drum line and doing all the cool drills and stuff, so that's probably my hardest part on percussion is.
Oh, the high schoolers are gonna like.
Yeah, they'll love it.
Okay, I would consider a motion to approve the hire of Sarah Ochs for the full-time K-12 band director music position.
Motion.
Okay, Melanie, motion and Keith, did you second?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Welcome to our school. Next, we have a motion to approve the hire of Josie Draper for the position of preschool teacher in the Central Lake Early Childhood Center.
Josie unfortunately was unable to be here today.
I am very happy to hear that because she, I thought that she got kind of a bum deal with the preschool program before and so I was very pleased. She was a good teacher.
Shelley, do you have something?
She taught for, in our preschool, well, in the NMCA slash Central Lake preschool program last year. She was a director at Noah's Ark and Traverse City. She's had teaching experience in preschools in Chicago, so we're excited to have her and she has a BA in education and her ZA endorsement in early childhood, so very qualified, so we're glad to have her.
And she will be teaching in the three-year-old program?
Three-year-old program.
Any questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the hire.
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion is carried. And next, we have to approve the hire of Tricia Fries for the position of preschool teacher in the Early Childhood Center preschool program.
Unfortunately, Tricia was unable to be here as well.
Okay.
Summer jobs and other commitments.
Okay, we have a letter of recommendation here. And Shelley, would you like?
I will also. Tricia's taught as our Title I specialist, reading specialist for the last five or six years, I'm not sure exactly which, did an excellent job. She's very organized, very organized, she organizes me sometimes. She has, her first degree was in social work, in family studies. She also has a teaching degree and her ZA endorsement, so we have another highly qualified teacher and she'll do our GSRP four-year-old room. So excited to have her too.
That is nice.
I'll just add, it's rare to find folks with the ZA endorsement in addition to their early childhood or the DA and the teaching certification in K-6 or K-8, all subjects. And so the fact that both are credentialed with early childhood and ZA is really neat.
Okay, I would consider a motion to approve the hire of Tricia Fries for the position of preschool teacher in the Central Lake Early Childhood Center preschool program. Melanie?
I'll second.
And Sarah? Are there any more questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Next, we're looking at hiring Donovan Eggleston for the position of Title I teacher. And we have a letter about him too.
Donovan taught part-time kindergarten for us last year and he taught reading and math. He also coaches JV basketball and varsity baseball and I would like to recommend his title as our Title I specialist. This year, we're gonna do title a little bit different, we're gonna do K-2 and 3-5, so both Title I specialists will be doing reading and math and I would like to recommend him for the 3-5 Title I position.
How big of a position is that? Is that a full-time position?
It is, it's a full-time position.
Okay. I would consider a motion to approve the hire of Donovan Eggleston.
Motion.
Second.
Who is the second?
That's me. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Wonderful to have Donovan Eggleston here full-time this year, that'd be good.
Good for kids.
Next, consider a motion to approve the hiring of Nicholas Rouser. For the position of part-time cook in the cafeteria. Nick has served as a part-time custodian and part-time cook for many months and has experience, so.
Nick, Nick's built in for us and worked for about three and a half months. Last year, this is a three and a half hour position and he has experience working in the middle school, high school cafeteria and has experience working in restaurants before he came to us and has done a nice job this summer on the custodial staff as well.
I'm sorry, I trailed off and I don't have that separate piece, oh, I see, you turn it off. It's been a long journey.
You definitely get an automatic pass after this conference.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? I would consider a motion to approve the hire of Nicholas Rouser.
Make a motion.
Support.
Melanie, did you support? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion is carried. Next, we consider a motion to approve the hire of Susan Varia for the position of preschool teacher assistant. And we also have a letter from Principal Durenzi about her.
We interviewed her about a month ago. I think I spoke about her at the last meeting. She has her associates in applied science and early childhood and she's pursuing a bachelor's degree. She has been the lead teacher in two other early childhood programs. They were Head Start programs in Mansmore and Boyd City. So we're very glad to have her and her knowledge of the curriculum and the assessments that go along with preschool.
She may still make it, but may not. She was presenting at 4H tonight, so we're gonna try and get by, but I wasn't sure.
Is she going to be in the preschool or the Head Start program?
We, at the last, I think she's gonna be in the, she'll be in our preschool program, but we haven't decided if she'll be the third year, the three-year-old room or the four-year-old room.
Okay.
But she'll definitely be in one of the preschool rooms.
Will there be another person, another preschool person?
We need to hire another assistant for preschool.
So in each of the preschool rooms, you will have a teacher and an aide? Including the Head Start?
The Head Start will have a teacher and two aides.
Okay. I would consider a motion to approve the hire of Susan Varia for the position of preschool teacher assistant.
Motion.
Okay, Greg and Betsy?
Betsy, the second?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion is carried.
Sue in the Head Start, sorry, Sue in the Head Start program, they're the teacher, a full-time aide and a part-time aide, just to clarify. And that, those people are hired by the agency.
Right.
I had a question I asked for Shelley.
Sorry.
We've got a lot of new employees this year.
We do.
How do we welcome them at our schools? Is it like at the first staff meeting?
We do it at the first staff meeting, yeah.
When is that usually?
That is September 3rd and you guys will all be invited to, if you'd like to attend. Kind of do it on morning, get together and then just have a work time.
Do we have any kind of a program for them to, that would help them become familiar with Central Lake?
We do, it needs updated. It needs some work, so, and that's gonna be part of our process this year as we continue with school improvement, but yeah, there's a skeleton, so.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, nice to have you. First, for business, I just wanted to make sure since we're all here, we confirm a date. I know I sent some emails trying to target a convenient date. He had a ballgame over the 27th, looking for a board retreat for goal-setting sessions. I think Mel, you could do the 28th, but it had to be later. Sarah, are you out of town?
I probably will be, I mean, Wednesday's my best day. Well, I'll be back Sunday, but I may have to go to UPT to pick up kids.
Ah, okay.
That was my issue.
So Wednesday is the best for you?
That is my best.
Okay, so given that, and I don't know if Wednesday doesn't work for anybody else, I'm gonna propose the 28th, just since we're all here, does that work? Are there any other?
I remember letting them here, but.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday maybe? Okay, okay.
And Mel can still do it, it's just later.
I emailed Mike just to confirm, he might be available. He is available, so I will, if the 28th is our best date, I'll share that with him later and then send a confirmation to the board, so. Moving on through curriculum instructional administrative updates, the 2013-14 schedule of classes is finalized last week and I guess it was three or four days last week, Jan Labanway and Shelley and new counselor, Darcy Noun, entered the course matrix into Power School and so the schedule is finalized. I know Principal Durenzi's gonna do a little tweak of the elementary schedule, which is a lesser ordeal in Power School, just to make sure we have appropriate time for class transitions with the lunches and recess. There's a minor tweak there, but basically it's ready to go as well.
Minor, don't worry. He said minor and crease.
I promise.
That's on film here.
Minor tweak.
Minor tweak, I don't think it'll affect them to at all.
Shelley mentioned this earlier.
Scissors, ready.
Shelley and I, Dr. Ellis, Johann, Kathy Kudrat, Allison Mativa and John Oates all met today at the district library and this was a meeting where we all got together just to discuss where we were, where we are now and where we're headed. And so, you know, we really did cover a lot. We were able to confirm with the Head Start director, Kathy Kudrat, the cost is still firm and unchanged from what we talked about. It's the amount of $20,000 to operate the program from 12 until 3, so we're running three full-day rooms for our three and four-year-olds. And so I'm excited that that is a reality and we just confirmed it on their end. It was a reality on our end, but nice that we're able to cement that in place. And new this year, working with Kathy Kudrat is the opportunity for us to add and infuse additional curriculum above and beyond the creative curriculum, the gold, which is the curriculum that Head Start runs. And so Head Start has a product and in the past, it was a product that was theirs and it was somewhat inflexible. We couldn't really interact with it and change it or modify it or add to it and this year we can. And so that's really exciting that we get to work with a program that we can sequence with our preschool teachers into Head Start room and of course, make sure we have alignment with K-1 and begin to talk about a continuum of learners, much like what we've seen tonight with K-1, to look at how do we have a continuum of learners at the three and the four-year-old level? So we have a three-year-old who's an early reader able to work up and do some different grouping. And so I believe we're gonna see a lot more fluid grouping there as well and being able to infuse curriculum is a first step and so that's an exciting change as well. So Principal Durenzi will be working with our two preschool teachers and the aides and the Head Start staff. And the Head Start teacher is returning, so Jan, who was there last year, is a veteran Head Start teacher, spent with us for years, she'll be back and so we have continuity in that program as well. And so we have continuity in that program as well. But since we're on this topic, we did talk about, you know, really in a nutshell, the five areas of focus that by next year, I mean next fall, really a year from now, the full implementation of the Purdy Fund will help come to fruition or make a reality. In a nutshell, those areas are the zero-to-three-year-olds. Zero-to-three-year-olds is not something that we here at Central Lake, you know, K-12 or even pre-K-12 have talked about. However, it is an opportunity for us. And as we look at where we were years ago and where we are now with no daycare, no formal business of daycare here in the town, there is a defined need. And as we looked closely today and a little further today with Dr. Ellis from the Community Foundation at Clio's Vision, she was and has committed funds for that initiative. It's not one we're starting on. Our priority program is preschool. That was Clio's vision. That was her directive, and obviously we're following that. But the zero-to-three-year-old option is there. And will begin to be talked about, especially as we work with John Olds from Advanced Ed with accreditation for preschool. So we want to obviously look at what supports are in the community for zero to three. We're going to begin working with three through 12th grade, but what's out there zero to three? We tossed around some ideas of daycare supports, if there is one, a daycare in and of itself. Family counseling, healthcare supports, early learning opportunities. So nothing, obviously, in concrete, more of a brainstorming session. The priority program, as we know, is the three-to-five-year-old program in the preschool and obviously supporting the Head Start as well. We talked about beyond our current expansion from one preschool room to two, which we've already achieved. We began looking at other opportunities to extend that continuum. Right now, their calendar is a four-day week with one day release for teacher planning and home visits and curricular planning. But when you look at the number of days the students are in the class versus our students K-12, we have 170 days K-12. We have about 121 in the preschool. By the time you start a few weeks late, get out a few weeks early, and then only go four days a week, you're losing about 50 days of contact time. And for some, that's good. And so we want to maintain that flexible model. If you're a parent and five-day-a-week full-day programming is simply too much for your three-year-old, we totally respect that. And so we want to make sure we have a model that will allow a four-day model or a parent flexibility. But it is something we did talk about. Are there needs? And so we began to think about, okay, do we need or do we explore and do research on a summer program? Do we look at an extended day? More of a year-round option? And if so, what does that look like? But certainly, that would allow for enhanced curricular programming. So we really began to think a little bit more out of the box on that one. And all this brainstorming today really is coming out of a charge that I have received from, really from Clio, but through the Community Foundation to provide beyond this year, a three-to-five-year kind of brainstorming revisioning document. So once we kind of go through this brainstorming, it'll be an opportunity for us through our school improvement process and sharing with Principal Durenzi and sharing with the staff to talk about ideas. We put them all down on paper. We brainstorm. And then we begin to really think about where the rubber meets the road. What's the research say? And where can we affect the most change and the best change for our youngest learners? So more to come on this. The next area we talked about, of course, was Central Lake's K-12 public school. And the focus after this year will really begin to take a close look at expanding the existing curriculum. With a focus on additional career tech ed courses, additional arts electives, additional core curriculum expansions to include an option for honors or AP classwork. Right now, we don't have honors or AP coursework, although we have hired a former AP teacher. So we are hopefully beginning to staff in that direction, if we can talk him into that down the road. And we'll explore that more in the months to come. But that's exciting. The fourth area, and this one, I believe, is beginning to get a little bit of discussion in the community, but it is one we did spend a little bit of time talking about today, will be to continue the work on draft language to create a formula by which we can incorporate a postgraduate financial support option for Central Lake grads. And this is part of Clio's charge. It's part of Clio's gift for Central Lake public schools in our district is to ensure that not only do we have a quality preschool and a quality K-12 program, but we provide support and an opportunity for students who might have otherwise been financially challenged to begin and hopefully complete a college program. A college program is loosely defined. It can be a two-year program. It can be a four-year program. It could be a welding certificate. It could be a diesel mechanic certificate. It could be Michigan Tech. Anything and everything in between. And really, I've spent a great deal of time researching what programs are out there in the state that are similar. And there are a few. There's the Kalamazoo Proms, which is quite well-known. There is a much smaller, lesser well-known one, the Manchester Gap Scholarship Program. I happen to work right down the road from Manchester, and I know their superintendent and their high school principal very well. And so I've spent quite a bit of time on the phone with them, learning about the implementation and what their program looks like. But for us, it ultimately has to be our program. It has to be a program that we, the Central Lake School District and Board of Ed and faculty and staff feel comfortable with. But keeping in mind, Clio's focus, hers was Central Lake District residents first. And so we have our charge. And then whatever formula we create and adopt will be put into practice. And I'm sure will be tweaked and revised, much like Kalamazoo has and much like Manchester has. You put out a first-year product, and then you go back and revise and make adaptations and tweak what maybe didn't work. In a nutshell, I know I've been asked, and I know certain board members have called me saying they're hearing questions about, is there a dollar figure? You know, a dollar figure per student? And there will be, but right now there isn't because the formula isn't established. But one thing, if we look at Clio's charge of Central Lake District residents first and maximizing the focus on longevity. If you were to envision, a K-12 school experience is 13 years. Or you could even back down further and go pre-K through 12 is 15 years. What percentage of that time was the student here? And so one way to implement a formula like this, and other districts have done similar things, would be to say, if you look at K-12 as 13 years, a student who went K through 12 and then graduated was here 13 13ths? You get 100% of that opportunity, whatever that opportunity financially might be. It's important to keep in mind, though, as you begin to think about the formula and think about this opportunity, because it's massive, that after next year, we have a graduating class of 2014, which would be the first class theoretically that could be part of this, you'll have classes coming after. So you don't just deal with one cohort and that's it. So in the first year, you may have 30 kids. The next year, you have 30-plus the following graduates. And then the third year, you have 30 that graduating, and then the third graduating class. So the number keeps going up. At some point, you could cap it at four years if you managed a four-year college cohort. But the numbers would quickly grow from 30 to well over 120. And so that does change the formula, and it changes our thought process. So I'm gathering as much information as I can. I hope my target, my target date here is Thanksgiving, to have a draft formula set of ideas for the board to think about and for the faculty to take a look at, and for folks to begin to just really kick the tires on it. It won't be a final product, but it will be hopefully some ideas on paper with some theory and thought behind it for our board and our district to really begin to flesh this out. And that's extremely exciting. The fifth area, and this one is equally exciting, but probably will follow our work on some of the others, but only by a little bit, is the opportunity to take a look at adult employability skill-building opportunities or supports. One thing that Clio had set into motion with this gift to the Community Foundation was the idea of supporting the community from birth to well after the high school diploma, the college supports, but then beyond. How do we attack, you know, generational poverty issues? How do we support families who might need additional employability skills? So I immediately began thinking of partnership opportunities with NCMC or NMC or Baker College, too. We have a beautiful campus. We're making improvements on it regularly. We have computer labs that sit empty from when the after-school program leaves at 5:30 till the next morning. What opportunities would exist or might exist for us to survey our community of adults? Find out what sort of adult night school or programming is even needed or wanted? Is it medical billing? Is it paralegal? Is it CNA? Is it RN, you know, early RN classes or nursing entry programs? I don't know, in all honesty. Is it accounting? But I know if we survey the community, we'll get some great feedback from folks who might be interested in no-cost adult night classes, you know, to really enhance their skill set and enhance their employability. So one other piece of Clio's gift that will really take a fair amount of time, but is extremely exciting. So it was a thorough meeting.
Those opportunities, some of them do exist right now. So, you know, it might be simpler than you think once you find out.
That's true.
Yeah, once you find out what the community is interested in, it might just boil down to having the money to fund some of those. Because North Central does do that, so. To a certain extent, but only certain classes.
Sure. Great. That's good enough. That's good. Lastly, though, I think I already touched on this as I kicked off. Something about this, given through this piece of it. You know, the focus is the preschool Head Start. And so while these other areas I just mentioned are extremely important, we will continue and build and strengthen the preschool program and support the Head Start program and move forward. Switching gears, moving on to finance personnel updates. We do have postings up on the website for a few more positions. We are hiring for 21st Century Coordinator. That is a, it's a full-time position. The hours range, I believe, from around 10:00 in the morning to 5:30 or a little bit after. This is the coordinator's position that manages the elementary after-school program. And then works with Raven Hill and outside partners to bring in folks to bring arts and crafts and other programming to our cohort of students who are here from about 3:00 to 5:30. And I think, Shelley, we have about 40 to 45 kids a day who take advantage of the program. So it's a great opportunity. Really excited about that. I've already received quite a few applicants who are interested in that job. So we'll be convening interviews on that here pretty soon. We have another Title I position, and applicants are coming in for that. And of course, the preschool teacher assistant position. So those will be secured here shortly and will be fully staffed. Technology updates. Technology Director Grohl has been working hours that are superhuman. He's been here morning, noon, and night. He's been here weekends. He's probably even been pulled in to help roll some bright green paint. But he's done a ton of wire pulling. And he has done an inventory of the entire district, which is something I'd asked for in the past. And he's taken it to the next level to include serial numbers for every piece of tech in the district. Printers, monitors, CPUs, keyboards, everything.
Started with CPUs.
But he has done, he's done a beautiful job with that process. It's really helped us find out kind of where we are and where we're going. As to where we're going, the teacher iPads are ordered. We'll be here shortly. There's already been quite a bit of interest on the covers, which I believe are everything from Stripe and polka dot to you name it. People are excited to pick their color cover of choice. So that's always fun. Computer lab updates and image. Steve has been working to replace, update, and expand the labs. We are excited to grow the 16 computers in the drafting lab to a full complement of 30. So we will have the middle school, high school lab. We will have a reimagined drafting lab, which will now equal the middle school, high school lab. So that'll be a second full lab, in addition to the BST lab where Candace is. So we've really increased the opportunities for our middle school, high school staff to take kids down and expose them to important tech and learning opportunities where they sometimes had to get on a waitlist and get, you know, kind of stand in a queue to get access to the one lab. We've really stepped it up there. So Steve's done a nice job, worked hard on that. New PA is now officially installed in the middle school, high school building. Patrick Corbett is over there today, is late as 6 o'clock, doing tests. He was working spot-checking the last speakers that were installed. We have now the option to call individual rooms. We can call wings. We can call hallways. We can speak just to the hallway. It's the system we've really needed and haven't had. So it's a huge, a huge gift from Chris Corbett. He's provided this system to us at no charge. The only thing we're paying for is the electrical wiring and labor installation. So it's a huge gift from him, and I'll be sending him a thank you note on behalf of the board. And I just wanted to make sure I publicly recognized him as well, because it's been about a three-and-a-half-week process in literally lifting every ceiling tile and pulling, you know, reams of cable and wiring every classroom and every locker room, the gym is now wired cafeteria. So we don't have any dead zones in the building, which is fantastic. We also have external ports, one out by the bus lot on the front and one out on the back of the building if we're outside the building. For example, at a fire drill, we need to plug in there and make an announcement. We can do that as well. So I'm sure the administration and select teachers will be flipping coins as to who gets to be the broadcast voice of the campus, but we'll work that out. Also excited to have an opportunity for daily announcements and other things with our middle school, high school students. So it'll be fun. Buildings and grounds updates, just to echo what Carrie and Bridgette said earlier. Huge thanks to the custodians. We've really tasked them with more than a normal summer turnaround. The normal summer turnaround is huge anyway, where they steam clean every single classroom's carpet. They wax every bit of the tile. They buff the tile. They really clean this place from one end to the other. And also cleaning leads into repairs. And that includes repairing the tractor and fixing the gutter. And it's non-stop. And so we've given them even more this summer, and they've met it head-on. And we're planning a little thank you pizza party for them. So we'll make sure to get another thank you note for their hard work. So that takes care of updates.
I have a question. How does the Title I position look different this year than last year? I guess I don't remember. Were there two teachers in those two?
There were. Shelley, explain it.
There were two. One teacher focused on reading and one teacher focused on math. The children do... One teacher focused on reading and math, K-2. One teacher focused on reading and math, 3-5. And the reason for that is just the coordination with the common core. Because everything is so merged and across curriculum. And then they're only focusing on those kiddos instead of trying to do K-5, so.
And then you mentioned long-term sub for special ed. And you do? What's that?
We are going to hire our Emily Neider. She's sitting right here. We're going to hire Emily to do a long-term sub for us in special ed. She's about halfway through our endorsement for special ed. So we're really excited to... She was our Title I math specialist. And so she's moving into the special ed. So we're excited to have her. She's been here three years, and we're excited to have her onboard.
Continue, onboard.
Very good. I guess we are moving on now to our closing. Is there any more guests or public comment?
I just wanted to say, I don't know if we explained this letter, but this letter you have, which we don't have a date on the top. It's from Bridgette and I. That was a letter that we sent home to parents at the end of the school year. And it went home to all the incoming, you know, kindergarten, first-grade parents.
And I think we gave you those... A copy as well. Previous memory that I want.
Oh, previously, okay.
Right, we got one before. Correct.
Okay, then. Any other questions, Ellen?
Sue, I just had a real quick thing. You can come back to it later. Like, when I say things about Chris Corbett, you know, I think about all the people in this community that do things for the school. Maybe as a board, we ought to talk about some kind, some way to every once in a while, recognize someone for that. I mean, the name that comes to mind right away, I can't have that many. I mean, she's done so much, and it would just be nice even to invite her to a board meeting and recognize all the volunteer workers.
I think that's a great idea.
Just a thought. I don't mean to pile things on us, but I just thought it would be nice.
That's a great idea, Mark. The list, I'm sure, as we brainstorm, goes longer and longer. Maybe we can host a volunteers launch where we invite them all in and have a certificate and say some words about each of their efforts.
I think that's a good idea.
That's a great idea, Sarah. I like that.
Ben, will you make sure you write that down?
I, yeah, definitely.
Okay, and I do see graduation is still upon the 25th, which is a Monday weekend, am I right?
Not Labor Day weekend.
More Monday weekend.
I remember there was some discussion on that time. It was just kind of fizzled, or do we vote on it, or I don't remember how.
If I remember right, the last time, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, the last time we talked and we voted this calendar through was that it had been a concern for some, we wanted to really take a closer look at it for the following year, was that?
We didn't really discuss it, also, we didn't address it much for the last year.
And I, that's a refreshing memory, but I can't recall where the concern was coming from.
Well, I think that, if I remember, that there were teachers and people that had to volunteer every Labor Day weekend, and so that was the concern.
Okay, okay.
Well, and I think initially, the reason we changed it to Labor Day weekend was because people wanted the opportunity of having, yeah, Memorial Day weekend, was that people wanted to have the opportunity of that third day for travel. And so that was the reason we changed it to Memorial Day weekend.
Right, I think that, I think it comes down to the people that weren't graduation, how do we, you know, either commit it every year to kill off the.
Well, I know Cindy Rogers doesn't go anywhere that weekend, does he?
But she has every other weekend. But I just remember that there was some discussion, I didn't remember how it was resolved, but you were going to put that in the gym.
I thought there was concerns, just coming from parents, about what a busy weekend and how hectic it was trying to do other family things along with that. I bet, stuck in my mind.
Maybe it's worth, and Shelley, just getting some feedback from other people.
Maybe it's time for a survey on that.
But at any rate, it's set for next year, for this year, this school, coming school year, and we'll have to look at what the following.
And I think I got it.
If there is no further comment?
I just had one, when does preschool start? I printed that calendar on, but it's not on there, so I didn't know.
Tentatively, we heard today, the 19th, correct, Ben?
Yes.
September 19th.
It's a Thursday.
Yep.
We wanted to, at least for this year, to align the calendar, so it's consistent for buses.
It's Tuesday, Friday.
What is the reasoning behind having preschool start so much later than regular school?
I do not know.
Are they going to get out earlier this year, too?
A little bit, yeah. The end of May, it's been traditional, but the calendar's shorter because they don't need to go as many days.
This year, they were out even earlier due to a mid-year budget cut for Head Start, and so because Head Start was operating both classrooms and NMC, you know, it affected both. If, you know, we did talk about that, if the same thing came up next year and they got out last week in April, there wouldn't be any need for the other two rooms to get out that early. We did want to start at the same time, and then as we, you know, explored expanding that year, as we looked at the extended day or the extended year, can we start, when K-12 starts the following year, can we start September 4th? Why not, or whatever day it is, September 5th? And so I think those are things that will be ongoing, that we talked about.
And something just going along with that, and I don't know what their schedule's been in the past, but I don't believe that the preschool teachers have any planning time during the day traditionally, like we K-12 teachers do. So by having teachers start a little bit early like this year, I know Trish and Josie are very appreciative of the fact that they have the amount of time between now and when preschool starts to do, you know, their planning, because they're pretty much with those kids every minute of the day.
Is there any thought, since we're developing this program, that we would build in some sort of a prep term for it?
I think that's the nice thing that they like about having the four-day-a-week, they have that extra day to do the planning.
So then the fifth day is planning day.
But it would be nice, I mean, in the future, since schools want to do it, to have those dates, the start date and the end date potentially on that calendar.
Right.
It's been available on the website for, I don't know, a little bit, I printed it on already.
Anything else? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:46.
Very good. Good deal.
Sarah made a motion. Anybody?
I love it.
Thank you.
The next question is, he needs help getting up.